That again, very, very clearly gives you an indication of the financial challenges and pressures that we face in those two particular areas. So that 65% is probably more than that. So it is a question, Lord Mayor, of who's going to fall over the edge over the next six to eight months. And some local authorities are in really difficult financial situations and poor ones. So that's why we've brought the motion. I think it's important that all parties, all political parties in this council show the same support, not only in this council chamber, but in the LGA and in other organisations, to make sure that we try to get the message across that we are at Breaking Point.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Again, with the majority vote, this is councillor Angela Coleman's best speech. Angela Coleman?
Thank you all, and thank you for supporting this motion. When I was in the Labour Party in 2015, I took a motion to my local CRP, Lawson Hill, condemning this by austerity and her puts to services. That motion in no way, completely, never laid a catalyst for being put in the impatience of position of having to make these cuts. It was aimed squarely at the architects of austerity, which is this Tory government. It was austerity that motivated me to become more involved in politics. It was the bluntness of it, it was the cruelness of it, and it was the injustice of it. But most importantly, it's the fact that it just doesn't work. When justifying their harsh cuts to the Tory government, often use the analogy of a household budget, that you have to put your plot for gold between us, infer in that way that labour left us here to spend. The only problem with the analogy is that it doesn't show the consequences of cuts. Because if you cut back spending in a household, nothing happens. But when you cut back in the line of economy, there are real consequences. If you cut education, there are consequences. Ermansh goes down, there are schools that can barely afford pens and paper, and teachers leave with profession, and as a result, you have a less educated society. If you cut health, there are consequences. A.D.s close, diseases go undiagnosed until it's too late, and life support is missed, and medical staff need to be prepared. And if you cut police funding, there are consequences. Crimes go to solve, their worries and violence increase, and people feel less safe. If you cut local government funding, and local government is the top line of the state, we are less able to provide even our basic statutory provision. The fact that Tory-run councils such as Northampton have collapsed, and East Sussex are stated that they can only afford a cool basic service, is proof that this approach to local government is just not working. And prior to that, Liverpool does more than any other council in protecting its citizens from the worst excesses of these harsh cuts. Benefit cuts, and the role that I've given the rest of credit means that we're going to have to do much more. Our citizen support scheme, our benefits maximisation team, and the Mayor of Hardship Fund are all key components in an overall package that's been put together as a safety net for people in need. But we desperately need a new formula, a new funding formula for local government, and one that takes into account the needs of the local population, so that urban areas like Liverpool will need us higher and not disadvantaged. I think it's important to note that this funding crisis is not across the board. We are not all in this together. There is a systemic problem in how funding is distributed. If need is embedded into the funding formula, this will go along with some of the funding crisis that is very core, and will prevent councils like Liverpool from having to pay for all cash. We should all be very proud of the work Liverpool is doing to address the effects of austerity in our city, but we know that this cannot continue. And we know that this is just a sticking plaster, discussion is more cuts and plans. We cannot continue to do well with what we have. We need to fight against Tory austerity, and we need a national campaign, such as Breaking Point, to draw together councils to act by austerity. University of Credit could be the new health tax campaign. We need to make sure to unravel that austerity is crystallising in Liverpool, and it will continue to do so unless we act now and oppose these Tory cuts. I'd just like to end on this final point. As a Labour CRP councillor, we've had the most depressing account recently in the news, which was raised by Luciano Berengue. The news that children are being seen going through bins for food. And I know from my political colleagues that this is not an isolated event. It is not a more demeaning and humiliating effect of austerity, it's got to be this. Please support this motion.
Okay, councillor Walsham? Dr Walsham, do it again.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Somebody doesn't want me to speak. But that was a really good first speech by councillor Coleman, that was excellent. And that just so eloquently just sums up what the impact of austerity has been in our city, as a result in our country. And Lord Mayor, councillor Coleman was absolutely right to say the last day of the government was unfairly criticised for not managing the budget, the national budget appropriately and well, when actually it had three, four years of budget surplus, which is more than the previous 18 years the Tory administrations have managed to deliver. And we were blamed for a financial crash which had absolutely nothing to do with us. But that's a cover for the government to stop making cuts because they said that there was no alternative but to have austerity. And it would be fair to say, it would be fair to say, that given the amount of cuts that we've had in this city, as well as cuts across the country, that Labour councils have been able to manage those cuts with the financial skills and administration that have kept those cities afloat. It's not Labour councils that are currently facing a crisis where they're going over the edge, it's Northamptonshire, it's East Sussex, and as I understand it, these are Tory authorities, not Labour authorities. You know, the mayor mentioned children's social care before, and it's true, we've mentioned it before in his chamber. You know, we're facing increasing pressures for children in the city, which, as councillor Coleman said, your children are ranging around in bins, you have to imagine what's happening in their homes. We're facing increasing pressures of increasing mental health that children are presenting with. We've got an increase, it's unbelievable to say, I can't believe him saying this, but an increase in infant mortality. It's just unthinkable to be able to imagine that we, as a sick, righteous country in the world, in this day and age, are facing an increase in infant mortality where it should be going the other way. But at the same time, we've got increasing issues and problems. We've got reduced budgets, we've got reduced budgets, and we've got probably 150 more children in our care, in our care, all of our care. 1,282 children in this city are in our care. They're parts of the city where children were being brought up, you're 11 times more likely to enter into care than in the wealthy parts of the city. This is all about responsibility as corporate parents in this city. So the LGA have been really clear, and it's cross-party, but they've been really clear that what we need to address this situation, to address the national problem, is £2 billion, £2 billion to fill this gap, which is a children's social care crisis in our country. And then the last budget, what did the government offer, £85 million, £85 million has been spent over three years to fill a gap, which is £2 billion, worth £2 billion across the whole country. And if you don't listen to me, you listen to Roy Perry, the Tory leader of Hampshire Council, who says, "Find out the government, heed these warnings, and fully fund children's services, so councils can support families before problems escalate to the point where a child might need to come into care." I've said before, austerity is about when politics and politicians abandon the most vulnerable in society. And when you've got a government that cannot recognise the needs of children in our society, then they are doing exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, Mayor, I'd just like to compliment councillor Coleman on the excellent main speech, which really laid out the obvious against austerity really well. Austerity is a marginal project, it doesn't work, it won't have any positive benefits, and it's having very harmful effects in Liverpool and in many other cities. The Green Party have always been opposed to austerity, long before the Labour Party decided to change tack and start a personal austerity. We support this motion, we want to see it in here in this city. Thank you.
Councillor Simon? Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I think it is an issue that all parties need to come together on, to share for that last comment from councillor Cole, because I think this is a motion that we could have all united alongside, piquing at each other, because certainly the people of Liverpool have all the brunt of austerity. And Angela Coleman, in her speech before, made a really important point about local government finance, because whether we're in austerity or not, the way local government is financed is definitely broken. And that is the thing that future Labour governments have committed to commission together. Mayor Anderson and Masal met with Andrew Gwynne, Chair Secretary of State for local government last week, with two Labour trade union labour organisations in the north west, and other Labour leaders, who've actually fought all of these cuts all along. What was great to hear is actually, a lot is spoken of the Preston model, which is fantastic for Preston, but it was great to hear the deputy leader of Preston at that time saying they looked at Liverpool and the work that we do, particularly around our social value policies, and that they insisted that to adapt that model. And what was clearly said by all of those leaders is one size does not fit all, and we all know that. Each city, each town, each borough is individual and very different. And what we certainly said, and they were really keen to have Liverpool involved in those talks, and it was great for us to be sitting alongside our trade unions, because we all know that it's our staff as well, not just as workers, but as citizens, who are also bearing the brunt in their communities, people who are on, you know, what you would say is quite middle income, but still having to go to food banks, still not being able to afford childcare, and still really worrying about what's going to happen with Christmas pending. So I think it's really important that we continue to put that pressure on. It's great to hear that the Labour in our position are listening to local governments, and I think that is down to Jeremy Corbyn and his front bench, and the fact there are a number of excellent government people, certainly there in the House of Parliament, and extra trade unionists who are really pushing for the work of people in this country. And it will be great for us as a city to be involved in that going forward. So I think that funding is the key issue, and we really need to make sure that when we get in power, that that is one of the first things that we actually tackle.
Thank you, councillor Simon. There's no more speakers, so we'll go straight to the votes. Um, do you want to respond, Simon?
Just to say that the thing from councillor Cole was spot on, absolutely brilliant, and amazing. And I think councillor Simon pointed out our meeting on Friday with Andrew Gwynne. And it is good that finally the Labour Party as well are now recognising that the John Barnes approach to local government funding is well through the deck of any. And it is so pervasive that in a week when we see, or I'm talking about, and councillor Barry Cushmore talking about the pressures on children's social care, that near £600 million in social care funding was sent back to central government by local authorities that didn't need to spend that money. How pervasive is that? That money's been sent back, and we're desperate for that money. And it shows, for instance, again, a clear example, where if you look at the south east and southern councils, that when they put up the council tax by 1%, it brings in round about £7 million. And in Liverpool, our council tax, put up by 1%, brings us in no more than 1.7 million. And it's that discrepancy, with also the fact that we have more call and more need for our services, means that we have to continue to protect the vulnerable, but grow the economy of this city, which is the approach that we've made. But also that when we build houses, we have to create, we build houses in the higher council tax bands in order for us to pay for the services. Because 70% of our council tax comes from the lowest bands. And the total amount of money that we get in in council tax is not enough, as you just heard me say, is not enough to pay for adults' and children's care, which shows the real pressure and demand of us for to do things differently. And that's why it's important that not only do we fight to actually protect people, but we actually fight for change, because we can't do it alone, we need central government to understand the inequality in the financing system of funds over government.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Now we'll go straight to the votes. All those in favour? All those in favour? June Annes, thank you for that. End of the convictions of our section 21 by councillor Alain Dean. Can I request councillor Alain Dean to move the motions, stand them in this main?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Absolutely, getting everyone's second there. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Also, I'd like to thank the legislature's honourable honourable members for this moment. It's been my farewell speech, I hope it matches what it is. Everyone in this chamber is worried about the homelessness situation in Liverpool and the UK in general. And there are a whole range of reasons why people become homeless. It could be a marital breakdown, relationship breakdown, mental health, physical problems, drug and drink addictions, or a combination of all, or even all of them in some cases. But there's an underlying legal reason why people are being left homeless. And it's the government legislation, section 21 of the 1988 Act, which allows a landlord to evict a tenant for no reason whatsoever, and who can't turn a notice. I was made aware of this at branch meetings in Princess Park, the Labour Party was three months ago, when one of our members approached me, told me that he had received a notice to quit his flat. He'd been a tenant for six years, he'd never caused any issues with his landlord, never been in arrears, never caused any antisocial behaviour, never done anything to breach the tenancy agreement. His landlord has decided to employ a management agent to run his properties, and that management agent, we have significant problems with in our world, and someone has made to call the rules for you, which is primarily a student accommodation organisation. His flat is a two-bedroom flat, he was a single pensioner, black single pensioner, he had four flats, the single flats, all white. My view, it's never been confirmed, because the legislation doesn't currently make you do it, if the rules for you said, "We can give more than one person, if you get a couple students in there." And that's why threatening to be evicted. And I said, "I'd take it up for him." I wrote to the landlord, told him, "Well, we discussed this with our officers in terms of the landlord licensing unit, then give us all the advice that he could, and say, 'Actually, what's happening is perfectly legal, and there's nothing really you can do about it.'" I wrote to the landlord and told him, "Why, what experience legal, morally unethical, I believe it was wrong." He since withdrew that notice and has given himself a lie next year to find alternatives in accommodation, which is a lot better than he had. I was also approached by someone over the weekend who's now been in a similar position, a young woman with a three-year-old child. She might have to find somewhere to move, but the property that she was in was furnished, so she was basically being kept there with no furniture. She's had the resources to get the furniture, she's very borrowed around the community, and we've provided everything that she needs up to date. She's had to move from a secure environment, needing a mosque in my ward, to a room which she's got no support mechanisms, no family, no relations, no real community involvement at all. And what bothers me, Lord Mayor, is that the legislation needs to be reviewed in a similar vein to the legislation in Scotland, which exists in Scotland. Landlords need to be made to declare why they're evicted, or asking the tenant to move. It can't just be because you want to. In Scotland, there are about 18 reasons that you have to say it's one of these listed on the menu. And if needs be, you have to provide evidence that that is the case, the case why you're moving them out. It can't be just because you want to. But the underlying threat of this is, we see what's happened with the universal credit. People are going to be struggling significantly when they go on to that. We've got evidence that people have gone six, 12, 10 weeks, 14 weeks before any payment is due. That could lead them into arrears, that could lead to a group of landlords saying, "Bang, here's my sum, I'm giving you a notice to quit." All these things build up on vulnerable families' wellbeing. And if we go down a similar route to Scotland, at least the landlord needs to say to the tenant, "This is the reason I need to move you out of your property." I've got no problem whatsoever with a landlord looking to remove a tenant that's breached every policy that they've got, is in arrears for years, has caused antisocial behaviour, been dealing drugs out of the property, whatever. They need to have the recourse to do that. But equally, tenants who've done nothing whatsoever need to know that a landlord wishes them to be moved out. So in their interest to support the motion, Lord Mayor, it is something that needs to change. And there are no illusions that this motion going through here today is going to change the government view. But beyond the growing list of authorities we're considering this particular issue, and I'm fairly confident that when we get a Labour government, this will be changed, either completely or make it a lot more beneficial and fair on residents and tenants, rather than being evicted onto the streets with no recourse to any resources. I urge members to support, Lord Mayor.
We've got a number of people in the case who want to speak, so I'll go to councillor Small first.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's 36 houses in Rentford Street in Kensington Fields in Central Ward, and every one of those houses is owned by one corporate landlord, and have been since the late 1940s. That company is now owned by the two grandsons of the original founder, two brothers. And those houses are rented out for around £100 per week, about £5,200 a year. Remember that figure? And in December last year, one of the brothers wanted to sell his share of the company. So 18 houses out of the 36 were sold to another company for £702,000, an average of £39,000. And that new company has put no additional investment whatsoever into those properties. Since the summer, these houses have started to be auctioned off, and the price that they've been going for is around £70,000 to £76,000. So if you've got a speculative investor who's made no additional investment into those properties he bought in December, is set to make £600,000 in under a year, with giving absolutely nothing to those properties. And Lord Mayor, I got hold of one of the adverts for the auction, and three properties were auctioned off about three weeks ago in one lot. And here's what it said. "They're ideal as an investment, they also have the potential to be let on a room-by-room basis to young professionals or students at a higher rate. The annual income is £10,400 per annum, compared with £5,200 which they would get in with the previous tenant in there." And all of this is done within the law. And some of those longstanding tenants who I've been working with, who've come to me, who've been served section 21 notices, include two low parents, one with children with special educational needs. It includes a man of 67 years of age who got divorced about 10 years ago, lost his home in the divorce, moved into private accommodation, and thought he'd die in that house. It includes a widow in her late 70s who's been living in the same property with the same landlord since 1977, paying the same amount of rent. And all of this, Lord Mayor, is within the law. We should be really proud as a council that we were the first city to introduce citywide landlord licensing. It is making a difference, it is dealing with some of these issues, but it only goes so far enough. What we need, Lord Mayor, is a fundamental and radical change in the law that recognises that houses are homes and not investments.
Councillor Duncan, I do apologise, there's a number of people up there, so sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Dean, for bringing in this motion. Much of what I've gone and said has been covered, but I'll just say that everybody wants a part of it. Determination of fragments of tenancies has become the biggest drag for homelessness in the country, a national obstacle since 2017. I think when we look at the figures, they show 11%, 11% in 2010 to an actual 32%. So the increase is massive, and it's going to keep coming back through the universal credit, it's going to get worse. It's going to get worse in terms of, particularly for me, when we look at the vulnerable groups, when people are starting to begin their own housing benefits, and they choose that on that day, they're not going to actually go and pay their landlord their rents, they're actually going to go and buy the kids' training school, they're going to buy their latest toys for Christmas, you know, they're choices all further, even more vulnerable, they're going to choose to do other things which may cause them further damage. That's a realistic thing of this when it comes to women are looking at in terms of evictions and how it comes. Never talked a couple, I hope, some of the people in this, in Wood. A couple of weeks ago, I had someone come into my surgery, lovely fellow, he'd been in this property 12 years, low parent, with his son, said, "I've been searched section 21, no sign of being evicted." You know, to me, just streets, I was like, "Why?", you know, never caused any problems, like you say. All it was, his landlord was getting divorced, and as part of his divorce agreement, he'd split the properties, so his wife was actually going to move back into that property. And I was like, "So we can't be right, you know, he's never..." So effectively, it was making them head on us because his landlord was getting divorced. Lucky for us, you know, in some ways, we managed to find out that his landlord wasn't licensed. So our landlord licensing was actually able to sort of defer, you know, make it, let them get, so they get the comments down, and he's not licensed. So it bought us a bit more time in terms of actually looking for the place for him and his son, which was, you know, absolutely outrageous, you know, divorce has happened. But this was someone who was genuine, but only for landlord licensing, he must have been asking such a short period, but landlord licensing prolonged that. So it's really important that, you know, the work that landlord licensing does, and how actually it's doing a fantastic job in this city. And then just going back to the Scotland thing, Alan, that's all the same things that I had to that day in terms of the 18 months. I think we've covered a lot of the landlord licensing, but one of the things which sort of worries me slightly, and that we need to go further than actually Scotland's gone, you can still do that, you can still do it if you want to move your family in, you can evict. Now, there's like discretionary ones, and there's monetary ones, but the biggest part for me is in Scotland, which we should be pushing for, is they now have private residential tenancies, which actually protects people in terms of, you can't just after six months say they're out, it's not a six-month tenancy, it's an open-ended tenancy. But what's more important is, they can only raise that rent after 12 months, and the after 15 months notice. That's really important when we look at our tenants, our vulnerable residents across this city. And that's all, so thank you.
The example that wanted to be made, but I think there's also a learning curve for us here, is that, I think Scottish Parliament's proven its worth, their calibre of legislation is far more... is far more consensus-based. And for those people in late party resisting the corporate board of temptation, I would ask you just to think whether you'd see the same calibre of decision-making and consensus and multiple reforms on first-class policy system with the difficulties we may suffer if we take basic PR or judicial system. The only other thing I'd like to add, because the law's been setting case, is this is even more prevalent than ever. I think we're seeing certainly locally, a roughly 10% shift from owner occupation to private rental. So this is even more prevalent in the city than it may be in the past. And we're seeing a lot of churn where agents are swapping hands and there's no even delineation to the owner. Certainly, we've got great reservations about some of the agents selling some of the properties. And I, like other members of this council, I'd like to give thanks to our planning licensing team, who have certainly been putting some pressure on landlords. I think whenever a landlord stops in Mission Park and says, while you're picking on my properties, and I respond by saying, we're not picking the properties, don't know who your properties are, I don't have your ownership details, would you like to give them to us? And then we'll contact you directly and say the landlord licensing team's in effort. The pipe did a very quick heater, one of you little democrats, ran out the room and fled in a hurry. And I think that's been pointing that we're actually making some progress when landlords are resenting what we're doing. There are some very good landlords, and again, obviously contrast Mission Park, the very next property along, where we have one of the local developers who's actually got their own agents cleaning the rooms, cleaning the cupboards, you know, cleaning the gardens, doing a very, very good job. It is the case that all landlords are bad and some landlords are very good. We are drawing up standards. And I'd like to achieve a bit of the board party group. Thank you for that. We've got five minutes, so I've got councillor Avi and councillor Blunt. So councillor Avi.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, whenever we hear landlords creating discourse around any legislation relating to landlords in Parliament, we always see almost every Tory that gets up to speak declaring a purely interest because they themselves are landlords, something that I'm glad to see that wasn't happening here tonight. And what I've found is, even though, I mean, I'm really proud of being able to have brought inland licenses to the city, but even those tenants that we have that live in licensed properties are still really fearful of declaring what it is that they've got on. I went to see one of my residents, and the whole of her property was carpeted in black mould. We got environmental help out and we got the team out, ladies and gentlemen, she was absolutely terrified that her landlord would come up with another reason why she'd got to be evicted, because this legislation, there is no need for them to tell you why. And she was absolutely terrified that her and her three stable children would be evicted in a few weeks' time because she brought this team in. And I'm also very conscious as well of the amount of millennials that we've got that live in private rented property. And the amount of times that they are required to move either because the landlord comes to increase the rent or because the landlord has sold the property on, so they need to leave the property and find somewhere else. And the gap between then leaving that property and getting their deposit back and then putting no deposit back on a new property, and that money that they need to find for that in-between is absolutely massive and puts them in a really tense position. They're people who are in wait, never mind those people who are either in, on zero hours contracts or on low pay and having to go through this process. So the importance of us challenging this piece of legislation is of people knowing the fact that landlords, those scrupulous landlords, we know there are so many of them in this city, that can use this legislation to get rid of what they need to be, risky tenants or tenants that challenge the condition of those properties. So I'm absolutely delighted that Alan has brought this forward, and it's something we should all be campaigning on. Thank you.
We'll very quickly just say that two points. First is a term in relation to adding tenants in the city who is subject to a section 21 notice. I would say that there is help available from the housing options team. In fact, the housing options team provide advice and assistance for about over 7,000 tenants in the city who are at risk of losing their tenants. The vast bulk of them are assisted in some way, and many, many of them are unable to keep their tenancies. So there is help and we don't act as hopeless if you are subject to one of these notices. The regime is a three-fold regime, it exists at the moment, with secure tenancies for lower-end properties, short tenancies for those in social landlord properties, and short short homes as default tenancy for people in private tenancies. There is a real conversation to be had about the structure overall of the housing market in this city and this country at the moment. The supply of housing is not enough, the way that rents, particularly in hot-spot areas in the country massively inflates, if prices are low for people out of the market. There is a real benefit, I think, to what the Scottish Parliament have done to effectively remove section 21 no thought ground for possession. But I would say that the mandatory grounds and the discretionary grounds that are at 20 or 21 so that exist in the other housing market for a short tenancy, which is the tentative position in Scotland, has as part of it a mandatory ground for possession if you're in two months' worth or periods. There is a real, the biggest problem facing that is the annihilation of people in this city, who as a result of transferring in universal credit, the direct removal of the payments and housing benefit to their landlords, whether it's private or social, means that they are rapidly accruing huge amounts of rent. In the news last, yesterday, County Council, much smaller of authority than that, indicated that since the universal credit scheme was rolled out in their authority pilot, they incurred, or their tenants incurred, an additional £1 million of social housing rent arrears. That is rippling out through the country. The social and the secure housing providers beg the government not to remove direct payment to housing benefit. It's still not too late, this council should send out a good message to government, for goodness sake, stop the ending or the removal of the classic complaint directly, the housing, the rental to universal credit to rent to the landlords. Because if you do not, so many of the people in this city are going to be crushed under the wheels of rent arrears, whether or not they exist under any one of the three hundred tenancies.
You're all there, just briefly. I'd like to say my thanks to the landlord licensing team. Obviously, I think we've made a word of the situation. They were the first people we contacted, they've been valuable with this case and others. Their knowledge and expertise and understanding of what our residents are going through is incredible. So to pay my thanks to them. The point the council were raised was specifically one of the points that was raised in Scotland. I spoke to one of the members who was involved in the new legislature that was in 2016. And one of their real concerns was if someone dared make complaints about the condition of their properties, the maintenance, the old keeping of the building, the ground, whatever, the landlord would cut in and say, well, you're rocking a boat, somebody's kicking out. So we started to stop people making those complaints, so people were in their subservient conditions, because the new landlord had to give a team over the head, you open your mouth, have a victory. And that's why we stopped this problem, and that's why we need to do it here. Universal credit will, like everything else that we speak about in the coming months, have an impact on everything we deal with. landlords will be using universal credit impact, and they've done, we need to make sure, but whatever we can do, we mitigate that.
Thank you for that. We'll go straight to the vote. So, voting. All in favor? I think that should bounce. Thank you for that. Right, item 10, thirty of fully settled as by Kimberly Berry and Shalva Parra. Can I invite councillor Kimberly Berry to move the motion? And do you have a second there? And can I inform people that this will be councillor Berry's first speech? Who's the second there? I'm sorry.
Thank you, my man. Over a period of years, we've seen story after story of large town struggles facing leaseholders in the UK, rightly not because of an estimated 4.2 million leasehold properties. We've heard examples of their poor treatment and exploitation by the council developers and companies. So much so that even this Tory government has grounded existing practices futile, abusive and unacceptable. And yet many residents are still living with unfair and numerous conditions contained within their lives. Many residents purchased their land prior to these scandalous practices, including regularly restoring the cost of moving, no less. Many residents don't have a choice. It's more than a year after the initial Tory consultation on the crisis included, for them that nothing has changed. Following consultation, Tories promised to rip forward solutions and legislate, but only as soon as parliamentary time allowed. Last month, they announced a second consultation paper, admitting that any potential legislation would be unlikely to be passed into the mid-2020, at the earliest. Earlier this month, councillor Sean Connor and I met with leaseholders in Hertfordshire. The two of us rose to come by how many residents accepted the invitation to share their experiences and how many residents were crying out for support. Their concerns were vibrating. Some have reported to be seeing charges quadrupled over a period of years. As the estate group and developer plans change, some residents have seen access to amenities and communal space decrease, whilst service charges have increased. Some residents report ground rents escalating at unexpected rates, and after using the developer's recommended solicitor, many still do not feel that they have received appropriate legal advice and money to purchase. Some residents are considering purchasing a freehold, but as the costs can be thousands of pounds inaccessible to some that they were originally quoted, it's understandably difficult to value up what is their best record. Residents still experience a lack of transparency and consistency, not only regarding how service charges are spent, but also in the management of their existing ground rent charges. The practice of developers selling freeholds to their part companies without the knowledge or consent of the leaseholder is valuable, and sadly, it's quite common to confuse the process. Many of the residents that I've spoken to don't deal with either the new freeholder or the developer in the payments of their ground rent. They deal with another company that only facilitates the collection of the ground rent. This company doesn't even seem to have a customer service on that. The National Association of State Agents conducted a survey of 1,000 leaseholders in the UK and found that more than 94% of them now regret their purchase, and 62% believe that they were sold. These figures are staggering. The men purchasing a home should be one of the proudest and most exciting moments in their life or to be stressed over. It should not be a decision that a disproportionate number of purchasers regret. One leaseholder recently told me that she felt trapped in her first home after being left unable to sell and less willing to do so at a considerable discount. I would repeat the figure that I initially quoted, roughly 4.2 million leasehold properties in this country. The issues that I've described today don't even cover a fraction of some of the difficulties that are facing individual leaseholders and families across the UK, a heavily disproportionate number of whom are based across the North West. Many argue that I haven't even touched on the worst of it. I haven't even gone to the source of the perverse system of administration charges allowing to overmake alterations to their property, alterations that could be anything from building conservatories to changing the colour of your door. I haven't mentioned the added pitfalls that you might find if you do decide to purchase a freehold, and I haven't discussed the safe and shameful process of including unreasonable restrictive covenants in the transference. The problem is structures across this city and the UK. And as we all know, central governance was done late to help the people...